Ordinance is amending our criminal nuisance ordinance to add language where if we go to a mall or go to an apartment building such as the Fort Stewart Hotel, we would have to go to each individual apartment a number of times for the other ordinance to kick in. I wanted to amend that to model after an ordinance, the North Hill College outside of Cincinnati where they make, they define premises a different way. And for this example, a number of nuisance activities occurred at the premise, if your premise has over 40 residential units, 25 activities. And then if you go in excess of 25, then we can start hitting them with a notice and eventually start fining them. So that one, North College Hill is, I think, very similar to ours except for the fact that they define premise as, well, ours defines it basically as one unit. They break it out, premises with two, three, or four residents, residential units, six nuisance activities, five to 19, 14, and it goes on. But that would strengthen us on like JMH A properties, Kennedy Apartments, the Fort Stewart Hotel. I mean, how many times are our officers down at the Fort Stewart Hotel? I mean, if they're down there, I heard a lot of times, close to 100, if they're down there 100 times, after the 25th time, we would be sending them a notice and after the 28th time, we would be billing them each time we go down there.
Mike, the other difference too is North College Hill is within a 90-day period where ours was on a...
A year, I think.
A year.
I don't want to change that. I want to keep it a year.
Keep it a year and put it in...
Yes, yeah. And the other ordinance which I like to see us adopt is modeled after Dayton, Ohio. They have a program called the Use Nuisance Abatement Program. And just, I'll read a couple, a little bit excerpts out of a couple articles. Since 2008, the Dayton police have served more than 2,200 properties with nuisance abatement orders that forbid tenants, property owners, and others suspected of wrongdoing from occupying buildings and housing units where the criminal activity was discovered. This started back in the early 1990s. The city of Dayton passed a nuisance abatement ordinance to shutter suspected drug houses, brothels, and illegal liquor and gambling joints. The police can declare properties a nuisance if they discover and can document certain illegal activities. The orders typically require a structure or apartment where a living or commercial space to be vacated for 365 days. This one police officer says you get kicked out of your house for a year. It's very effective. It's a deterrent. Last year, which is 2015, Dayton police served more than 165 structures with nuisance ordinance through the end of November. And the police can take this action even if no criminal charges or convictions result from the complaint. Other cities in the Dayton area, Trotwood, they have adopted it. Fairborn has recently adopted it. And just a little bit of background on Fairborn, says under this ordinance, if an officer is dispatched to the scene and finds violations in regards to felonious drug use, the gambling house, prostitution, or sex-related offenses, drug abuse, nuisance party regulations, severe alcohol crimes, or allowing a resort for thieves, burglars, robbers, and individuals involved in felonious conduct, the supervisor on duty at the time of the crime will be dispatched to the area to conduct a total investigation of the situation, including a review of the area in addition to the history of the individual. If that, if the supervisor finds the activity is happening, they will be served paperwork stating they have 15 days to leave the premises. The Dayton police, I believe, when they do a drug bust, they're passing out those citations right then, or at least within 24 hours. Will this solve our problems? No. I mean, will it address the drug dealers that are going down inside cars? No. But will it address some of the neighborhoods? I mean, Trotwood, they rave about it, Fairborn, Dayton, they say that you can bring back some neighborhoods and save some neighborhoods. Now, Gary, I've been working with Gary on this. He's reached out to Dayton. I don't know if they've gotten back to you.
You know what? I called, I talked to the secretary yesterday, and they're supposed to get back because when you look at what they got is they got bits and pieces of sections in different other chapters. So like, I want to continue to have them, you know, give you a compilation of all the sections that they used so we can put it in one chapter for ourselves.
Yeah.
So I'm calling here and I'm also calling down to Fairborn.
Yeah, I was going to say just that. I mean, they're a bit, a little bit smaller. The bigger cities, they may not get back to you.
Right.
But Dayton was challenged in the courts and Dayton, that ordinance was upheld. I think this would be effective, another tool for our police force combined with the other one. Now, on the other one, we just got to make sure we're implementing that first ordinance. I mean, I don't know how many houses, structures we have, I know we did it for the one down on Sixth Street. We've issued some there. I think one out on Sunset Boulevard. Scott mentioned there's a house he believes the police been to 40 times. I don't know if we've issued that one. But supposedly, the chief's not here, but he mentioned the Spillman system should be very helpful in being able to track this. I don't know how he's tracking it, but I mean, somehow I would like to report on how effective is this ordinance? Because I don't want to pass ordinances if they're not effective.
Hey, Mike, if I can also, the chief and I met last week and I asked him to go back during the past, I think, year and a half. We had performed 10 search warrants at homes where we went in. And out of those 10, four of those were JMH A rental units. And I contacted Mrs. Bailey, who's up there, and she confirmed to me that those people, they get tossed. So out of the 10, we know that four of them have gotten tossed. And then there was, there was two other drug searches that took place. They didn't find any launcher ban in there. But then there's four others, one on Union Oak Road, Pennsylvania, and state that, you know, where people were arrested in there where drugs were found. So those would be very easy because under the Dayton ordinance, then we, you know, we file the notice on it and then they have, you know, we'll set up a, I believe, a board.
After the board.
Yeah, we'll have to have a board to review. And if somebody wants to appeal that notice, an eviction out of there, they can. And then if they don't, you know, then that 365 days goes down and that place is shuttered.
Yeah, now, in Dayton, after they review all the facts, I mean, they could say, if I was the one dealing drugs, they could say, Mike Johnson can't live there anymore. Or that based on their view, they could say, nobody can live in that house anymore, depending on what actually activities were going on. And Dayton also maintains a database on their website so you can type in Mike Johnson and see, has he been cited in any of these so you know not to rent to him the next time? So it's, the Dayton one's a little, it's not just like a real simple, we make a change. It's a little, like Gary said, they've got it interwoven. But these towns are going to this and they, according to these newspaper articles, they believe it's really effective and if they able to save some neighborhoods and bring some neighborhoods back.
And a lot of it is patterned after the nuisance ordinance statutes, 37-6 of the state code.
Correct.
What I like about Dayton is they go a few steps better, you know, than what the state code does. You know, so because the state code, a lot of times, you can throw the wrongdoer out of there, but if the wrongdoer is renting off to somebody, you have to prove that the person that owned the place had knowledge that, you know, that this was going on. So where Dayton, to me, is, you know, like, I think you can do more damage with Dayton ordinance, but once again, it's just a matter of finding it because there's that one section that you and I can find 150 and then there's different sections in different chapters. So we'll, I'll...
Yeah, we get in touch with Dayton, see what that, and then maybe Fairborn, maybe Trotwood and see.
Right.
That they're both smaller our size and see what they did. But the police officers were able to issue those citations almost at the time of arrest. As long as there's drugs there and everybody says, it's not my drugs, too bad. Somebody can get down that house.
If there's living there, it's out.
It's out, you know? You've got drugs in your house, no one wants to claim it, it don't matter, you can get kicked out. But there, and there is an appeal process, so they will have their due process. And like I said, this was backed up in courts in Montgomery County and it's been in effect since the 90s, so, and it is effective.
Yeah, and I am a landlord, I guess it would be very helpful if there's drug activity you could actually throw them all right in there. Because if I have to go to court and do it, it can take, for that, it can take 60 days easily. If I have to wait 30 days, then we're going to have to give them probably a three-day notice and then wait for a court date. That's going to be two weeks to three weeks after the 30 days.
And if they file an answer on you, Scott, they have to push it back.
Yeah, if they have to hire a attorney, yes, it can really be a long time. So yeah, something that would be quicker because I just know from my own experience, getting rid of people for that is hard. So maybe we can make it less hard because for that thing, I want somebody to leave that in my property.
Plus, and the other problem that you run into, you may have to document an actual conviction off of it.
Yeah.
You know, like off the felony where if I'm reading Dayton's ordinance correctly, you know, like, if they're charged with the felony for, you know, for whatever type of possession they have, whether it's cocaine or heroin, and you got the charge on them, bang, they're, you know, they're going, you don't have to wait.
Not that much, yeah.
Yeah, for the felony conviction.
But this makes it much, much more quicker.
It appears that, yeah, when you read it, but like I said, I like to get all those, all those sections and why they, you know, why they did it that way, you know, it's, but like I said, I got, so I'll report back to you each week as to how we're doing on it.
Yeah, I mean, I want to make sure we do it right, we get the sounds.
Also, all these fines, they're paying their fines, especially the hotel or some of these other housing projects. Do time, shut them down.
On the criminal nuisance one, where we want to make that change, we can do that relatively quickly.
Yeah.
It's like they have new, it's like they have new security anywhere down there.
Well, this will catch their attention because if I'm right, what I was told, I thought we got over 150 calls every one year. That's a lot. And with our, I don't have our ordinance in front of me, I can't remember when you get to the temp one, where we're fining them $1,000 for every time down there.
Last year, last year, five percent of the housing projects were usually run from the police. That was a bunch of house.
The sixth nuisance activity and each subsequent nuisance thereafter, $1,000. Third nuisance is 250, fourth is 505, seventh 50.
So if we're there 140 times in a year, they owe us over $1,000.
Shut them down.
So they'll either clean it up or they'll close that place, which, I'm not just picking on them. Any, any business, any rental that has multiple units, we need to have a tool. We want to loop on our current law. We don't have that tool. Anyplace where we go multiple times, that's who I'm picking on. So, and, well, they got any questions?
No, I just, I've been reading this. You said this with the email that day, police hitting criminals where they live.
Oh, yes, I read part of that article.
Yeah, and right here, just, "Police can take nuisance abatement action even if no criminal charges or convictions result from a complaint or case. They can declare a property a nuisance if felony drug or found on premises even if possession cannot be established." I mean, that's, that helps.
It helps and, like I said, we'll make a proper on them to do business with Steubenville. If you do it, if you get caught, you know, that house is going to vacate, the landlords are going to want to make sure, I believe landlords want to make sure they're renting to respectable individuals. And, you know, for the people that are just letting these drug users come in and use their home, that they got something at stake, we're going to get kicked out. And I think we, when we adopt this, we adopted Dayton procedure of putting their names in the database so any landlord that's renting can just go, or any citizen can go see who has been busted, who has been given this citation for drug use, or any of the other illegal activities.
That's right.
Hey, Mike, and the other thing, on those 10 that we did search warrants on, the four that would be good for this program, three of these guys are still in, or they're out of the place. So we don't forget them either, but I like about Dayton, they'll follow up on it.
Yeah, and if these individuals come back to that house.
Right, right, they can.
And if they do, then we got them on violating the law again. And if somebody, another drug dealer, one leaves and they invite another one in, you know, then we set the whole house down. We lock it for a year. That's, though, I had on that, Willie.
Any other questions for? Okay, thank you, Mike. The chief's gone with us tonight, number three, Officer Visson, I guess you're going to take over for the citywide crime stats for tonight. Thank you, thank you.
I believe what he wanted was the first two months of this year and two prior years, we can see comparatively how we've done over the past two months. So far this year, up until yesterday, we've responded to 2,425 calls for service, which has increased every year. We're up seven and a half percent from last year, actually up 21% from 2014. We've had one homicide this year, two dates. Next page, nothing under category great. Burglaries are slightly down compared, it looks like we had 15 so far recorded. Robberies, it's gone up and down, but I think we've had three reported robberies year to date. The thefts, they're rated on 130. That includes droplifting, whether it's Walmart, Kroger, whatever. Theft from autos is, it looks like it's down a lot, but it's down, from last year was six, there's two this year. Usually theft from autos, that's usually some, we got a couple of different individuals just getting a rash of cars. Shots fired and evidence of shots fired, best I can tell, we had about 15 reports of shots fired this year and there's three of them that definite evidence was found. No arson. Assaults, up slightly, I think the number was 28 or 29. And arrests, this year to date, 306 arrests with 322 total charges filed. It's slightly down from last year, slightly up from 2014.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Okay, number four, Safer Grant, Chief Capaldi.
I had given a report, I think at the last safety committee meeting, on our current Safer Grant. This report deals with the application process for the next Safer Grant. The application process for the next round of Safer Grant funding is open and needs to be submitted by March 24th, 2016. What I'm proposing is that the fire department apply for Safer funding to fund six positions during this period of performance, which would run approximately from January 2017 to January 2019. This would mean that the city would fund the current 34 non-Safer positions that are on the table of organization, and we would apply for Safer funding to provide the remaining six positions. Safer funding has allowed the city and fire departments to provide effective, efficient, and safe staffing levels over the previous two years. It has also allowed us to maintain three fire stations, reopening the station on flood hikes. These staffing levels have seen the department realize record lows in overtime costs from 2014 and 2015. In 2014, we had $31,000 in overtime, in 2015, we had $26,000. Prior to the Safer funding and the, also the agreement by the firefighters, Local 228, to reduce the minimum manning level from 10 to nine per day, overtime totals were running at approximately $78,000 per year on average. So this staffing has allowed us to cut that by more than half. In 2014, 15, the city funded 31 positions and the Safer Grant funded nine. And then in 2015, 16, the city funded 30 positions and the Safer Grant still funded nine because we had a guy leave and I applied for a waiver and they gave us the waiver and they're paying for nine, we're paying for third. So the fact that the city has not had to fund three positions that are in the TO, which is basically the 32nd, 33rd, and 34th, and a bargaining agreement during the Safer Grant period, that saved the general fund over $300,000 so far during the last 19 months. Those are positions that on the TO, we were supposed to be paying for, but we got the grant to pay for. Also, even with the acceptance of a new Safer award, I believe the department will have enough turnover in the next few years to cover those six positions in question. We don't want to hire the new guys and then not have any turnover and have to lay them off again. At the end of 2013, when the current Safer Grant started, prior to being awarded the current Safer Grant, the three firefighter positions that comprise the 31st through the 34th positions on the TO, which is basically 32, 33, 34, they cost the general fund approximately $200,000. But right after we applied for that and got the Safer Grant, that's when the union and the city negotiated, we restructured salary for the first four years. So now, a guy at one year is making $33,000 instead of 44. So now, those same three positions, today, after Local 228 and the city worked to restructure that, and also they eliminated the holiday pay for those new guys. So today, the cost of those three positions have been reduced to approximately $150,000. So even though you're paying for those three positions that you didn't, you're paying $50,000 less. So really, it only cost you about what you're paying for two back then. So what I'm doing is I'm asking for approval to apply for this funding for the next two years as stated in the first paragraph. I said, I, you know, there's no reason that we should not apply for this funding and accept it if awarded. And the only reason I brought this up today is because I'm on a deadline by the 24th of March to submit it. Now, I already got it 80% completed, but I just wanted to give you some numbers and these are all backed up by the reports I've given to Dave Lewis. And sometime this week or next week, I'll talk to Mr. Matt Madison, but since it was a safety community, I want to bring this up and give you some stuff to look at. If you have any questions, pop on my office, I can show you all this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Chief.
Yes.
Did I intervene to say that we have the Safer Grant? If a guy retires, he won't fill that position?
Well, currently, what it is is currently, the current Safer Grant period ends in July of 2016. What happened was a guy left in November. Well, the administration pretty much said, look, we don't want to hire a guy in November and not know if we're going to be able to keep him in July. So rather than just give up that funding, I applied for an amendment and they let us not fill that position but still pay nine guys.
Okay.
And the only reason we're doing that is because we're at the end of this grant. Like, if it was still the first year, I'd say, yeah, hire them.
But that's because you filed for them.
Yeah, yeah, we filed for that and got approved.
It was a time law.
Yes.
Timing issue, okay.
Yeah.
Chief, can you tell me how many are in the drop program and basically?
Basically, we have, I believe at least 10 guys that are eligible to retire. So over the next two to three years, I'm saying seven people will be gone. I may have three by end of this year. And that's another thing, every time someone retires, your replacement at the bottom, they're now making $27,000 and the guy who's left is making 48. So every time someone goes and you put someone into the bottom, it reduces the total cost. Plus, with all the concessions and agreements we did with the union, we got rid of the holiday pay, the younger guys max out a five-week vacation. So as you come in, the costs are all part of the town. So just wanted to let you know that.
Yeah, I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I mean, I'm against doing the Safer Grant. And the reason I'm against doing the Safer Grant is it basically will freeze the fire department at the level of 33 positions currently. Our budget, and it's no secret, we're spending more than we're bringing in, or at least we're budgeting that we're spending more than we're bringing in. So if we get the Safer Grant, that takes the fire department off the table when you start looking at how to balance the budget. So now you're going to look at M and R, street, well, they're already, they actually need more people. And I don't think you can cut them anymore, we should actually be giving them people. And then now you've got to look at the police. They're the next biggest, they're the biggest, so if we have to cut, we have to cut police and streets. And I think we should not go for the Safer Grant, we should allow for attrition of the fire department. Hopefully, that's all we have to do. As these guys retire, with the force, we'll get down to a smaller number that the city, I believe, can properly get by with, with a smaller police force, with a fire department. I mean, my position's no secret on this. I've compared this to Weirton. Weirton's a city of similar size and yet their fire department has 23 paid firemen and it costs the city of Weirton $900,000 less to operate their paid fire department than it does the city of Steubenville. And it's, I believe the city needs to look and say, how do we want to spend our money? Our pie is only so big. I mean, if you want to have a fire department of 40 firemen with a Safer Grant, well, then you're going to have to, there's a cost to that. And the cost is your streets are not going to be, snow is not going to get taken off correctly. The police may have to get them cut and we may not fight our biggest problem with this crime. So I just throw that out there for food for thought that although it's a Safer Grant, it does have a cost to the city in the long run. And I'm not going to vote for any more budgets, that budget spending more than we bring in. So I mean, I'm putting that out there now for when we vote in the fall. So that's all I got to say.
Scott.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, yes, sir. Go ahead, go right ahead.
Mike, chief, what I'd like to do is sit down at the table and walk through all this. I understand exactly what you're saying, Mike, because I've looked at this and you're absolutely correct on locking the positions. The chief has brought out some possibilities of people leaving. When you have people leaving, it gives you a chance to redline some positions at that rank. But again, I'd like to sit down here and walk through all of this together at the table and then we'll make our decision what we got to do. I understand clearly where the chief's coming from and it's a smart move. But always when you take a grant, you have to look at the end part. And the end part is this, they give you the money on these grants, but they expect at the end of the grant that the cities are going to absorb these positions. And we may not be able to do that financially. But if you have people that leave and the chief is absolutely correct, they leave at a high level and you bring in the lower level, you're saving money there. But we have to sit and look at this. Bottom line, at some point, you are absolutely correct. Our employees are the highest cost in any environment here, that's what we have to look at. So again, there's a lot of things going back and forth and I know that. But I believe getting everybody at the table and sitting down there and we'll walk through this and we have a clear picture and then the council will be able to make a decision what they want to do. But again, chief, I'm aware of the deadline and that we got to make sure what we're going to do. That's just my recommendation, Mr. Paul.
I agree. I like that. We do need to sit down and discuss this. We've talked a couple times. Mike, I was not feeling on this and I feel like you're feeling on this. I like that, I like that idea. Appreciate it. Thank you, I appreciate you bringing that up. Yes, sir.
I like what you said, I understand what you say about deficit spending. We've been talking about it for years. But if you look at the actual numbers for the last five years, we haven't deficit spent in five years. At the end of the year, the last five years, we've always took in more money than we spent. And that's hard work on everyone's part. So when we're talking about deficit spending, I would just like to talk about actual numbers and not your deck. So that's something we can look at too.
And this is good because what you brought up, Mr. Matt Madison, we can bring this up and chief can bring his points and Mike can bring his points and we can all sit down and hash this out.
I probably should have said this to you, I've already met with all the firemen. I did this this past week. And as I said before, I'm going to meet with all the employees, but I got a good chance to hear from all of them. And they are, I'd be concerned, but who I met, the true ones were your Safer Grant firefighters. And I would be thinking the same thing, am I going to have a job here? But again, I ask this office question, when you were hired, did you understand the conditions you were hired under and each and every one knew that? So that made me feel good they weren't coming in blind. But again, with the age of this city and the problems we have, and this just happened today, I didn't plan this, but we had a fire today and I got to see firsthand how our firemen responded to things. And I'll tell you, you got to squirt away your prick, but it's down the... But it's down to the budget is what we're down to. And we're going to look at everything, and that's one thing, I don't want to lose any employee where we're at right now because of the age of this city. But again, I look at everything. Every dollar, every nickel we can give and save by cutting certain things here, whatever it takes to keep us, to keep our safety here in this city, we're going to do that. But I believe getting everybody at the table, and we look at this, and then council can walk away the direction they have to take.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Any other questions on that? Okay. Put that to bed, okay. All right, we'll move on to item number five. Neighborhood community appearance initiatives. Mr. Treasi, Officer Viset, and Mr. Bear, I don't know which one you guys want to go through or go to, or anyone wants to start this off?
I think Chris can start. I'll start, we continue to have, we continue to have one, one respect, dedicated to the Hilltops in the downtown. We're also hoping for a fourth of us, and a police, property maintenance code, we've got a site name as well. So we continue to work with regard to that, and continue to report cases to how important we're violations are current with regard to demolition. We have five houses, we've now done six in progress. I expect work to take up with regard to that program here as well.
Questions for Chris?
Can I ask one question? Okay, sorry. All right, 2016, I did not say that first. Sorry, it's my question.
Move on, Mr. Bear.
Just a second, yesterday, we, through the winter, and primarily in January, February, we've been trying to do what we can and to build up the rest of the alleys. We started O'Connell and North End and Lake Bell, so today, the alleys between Arlington and Oak Road, Oak Road and Walthley, both the Oregon, Oregon, Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania, Maryland and Maryland Bridge, we pretty much, you know, cleared it all of these, were cutting trees, live with brush, picking up garbage. I don't have total yet on the amount that they removed, it's substantial. That new mattresses, couches, chairs, all kinds of, all kinds of stuff. So I will be able, I'll pin supply to the city manager, and then he can share with you guys as far as the type of volume and tonnage that we will collect and the kind of man-hours that have been put into it. We will continue that as possible in between competing demands and other things that we're trying to do. So we're going to just continue, and we'll come off in pleasant heights and do what we can. The only thing I would say, as I'm sure you all know, is, you know, it's always been my feeling, and still is, that the issues that we're all dealing with as far as community and the Hilltops, these are, these are compliance and enforcement issues first. These are, these are people, residents, properties, not doing the right thing. And so there is a cost to all of us, and after bad actors, but it's important to the community if there's an issue out there. So it's not something we're able to do every day, but when we have opportunities and windows of opportunity and manpower availability, we can work on that. And we've covered quite a bit of ground. But again, I wasn't able to get the total numbers put together quickly enough, but I'll have that for y'all, send that up to the city manager, and that'll continue as long as, as long as necessary, as long as we can.
It's ongoing, we know that. Yeah. It's ongoing. Good.
I could comment, I got several calls, Bob and Greg commenting about it proving being there very visible, that we're there an awful lot. So good of you.
And I noticed the other day with a matter of someone, I went by a couple hours later, it was gone. And I didn't make a phone call, it was gone. So, I mean, we are freaking out, and people just throw stuff anywhere. I mean, it's amazing, people have the lack of respect, do I want to say, or the lack of pride, I don't know, I just can't believe people do some of the things they do. But yes, I've noticed the difference, especially in the alleys.
Well, a lot of what, in, you know, conversation with the city manager, and Officer Viset, Sergeant, I should say, you know, the stuff we've been dealing with is kind of at middle ground. It's hard, you know, if we get a call, excuse me, and there's been some enforcement action, and something's being pursued, and we're able to identify a specific problem at a specific location and know who the actors are, that's great, it's documentable, and if the person doesn't come into compliance, and ultimately the city has to clean it up, we can go do that, and that changes the problem. The other issues are, you know, it's just, you don't know, you can't, you can't, to use the phrase, you can't pin it on anybody, you can't identify the problem, you know, who did it or who's responsible, but the problem remains. So we're trying to get our guys, you know, if you see it, pick it up. If you can identify it, and we know, we can pursue this, do some type of enforcement action, so that we can then pass on those costs to the appropriate party all better. But as you know, in many cases, that's easier said than done, that's not something we can always identify. But when we can do it.
Can I ask you one quick question? I'm trying to figure out if there's a way that we might be able to assist in several of these things. Is it possible that someone who's driving the sanitation truck, now this is not down the alleys, but going around the whole, all the neighborhood, is it ever possible to get him maybe five or six things and a sheet of paper and just say, you know, "We're going by all of the houses in these neighborhoods." Would you jot a comment that could be transferred then to the sergeant? Check out these houses for these particular things I noticed? Because everybody isn't driving by every house all the time, but if he's, if he's already going, if it's the driver who's sitting in the truck, he's not jumping out and doing the trash cans, is it possible for one department to sort of assist another in that way? And that way, the sergeant would just, I mean, obviously, you can drive around and look for things, but if you had a list of houses where something was noticed, maybe more quickly, we could, we could give out more of the notices and get some into compliance more quickly, which would affect the whole neighborhood and look at the streets.
Absolutely.
The notion?
Yeah, I think so. The details would be worked out, and it kind of happens in form.
Ms. Khan, I can answer this. Tomorrow morning at 6:30, I'm meeting with sanitation and the streets. In any city, your employees are your eyes and ears, just like the citizens are. But again, sometimes they forget, or it hasn't been set up properly. A lot of the reports that come into Mr. Bear's shop comes from the police department and the fire department, what they see out there on calls or on patrol. But you're absolutely correct. Those men, every employee that works for the city will be advised and shown how they need to report things into what department. And again, after tomorrow, when I've met with Mr. Bear's employees, I'll get a little bit better here, field goal, what they see and don't see. But you're absolutely correct. The employees of the city are your first line of defense, they are your eyes and your ears, and these employees will know that. And again, it's everybody working together, and you are going to see this as a must.
I got a question. I also heard from several residents up on Lake Bell, they appreciate it, it is making a difference, and I wouldn't be surprised if someone tonight make a comment in public forum, and they do appreciate it, and it's really helpful. My question is, with the spring just around the corner, we have a weed program, we're spraying the weeds, that's been discussed a lot last year. I'd like to, hopefully, we have one, so we're out ahead of it.
Yeah, and that's something, you know, we'd like to discuss with the city manager, and many ongoing issues that we really haven't had a chance to sit down and kind of go over and get up to speed on. The licensing should be in place by the end of March. There's other things, of course, that go along with that. I would be the licensed applicator for this, I'll hold the license, and then work can happen under that. But there's a few other things that go along with it, of course. We need other people to actually be able to go out there and do that, we need the equipment, which we did talk about last year, it shouldn't be a budget, it's not a problem. As far as, as far as putting that in place, not a problem. As far as the logistics and rolling it out, there's some things I'd like to discuss with the city manager, make sure we get it off the ground.
I know you're short-staffed, and that goes with the thought of spending, how we talk to the prioritized or spending. But I mean, for you to do this stuff, to pick up the garbage on the Hilltop, to spray the weeds, to fix the bottles, you have to have an adequate staff. I don't think your staff is adequate in staff and numbers on what they do, in numbers. And I think the city and the council needs to look at that and try to get you some more help so we can get the city looking better.
I would agree with you. Thank you.
Any others? Any other questions? Or Viset?
Well, going off of what Ms. Khan said, Mr. Matus, excuse me, Mr. Matt Matus was just talking about other city employees. I've actually had the couple of employees from the water department come to me recently about specific properties, so there are a few coming to me already. During the month of February, not counting what I started in January, but what I've started in February only, I've had 14 properties with litter complaints I've been dealing with. One parking complaint as far as abandoned vehicles on a lot. Five were downtown, eight were on the Hilltop, one was on the West End. Out of all those, all but five have been cleaned up, they're completed. Five are pending, actually, at this point, due to the time of the month, at the end of the month when I started it, with the ordinance, you have to give them five days, so I'm still within that five days, working to hopefully getting cleaned up. I have a feeling there's actually going to be probably two that are going to have to end up in court, because I don't really see any way of them getting it cleaned up. I've learned, just, you know, a few extra phone calls, dealing, talking to people, give them a little push, I actually have been able to give them a couple of them, so I'm pretty happy about that. Through the seventies, I had to cover chip supervision, kind of overtime department, but that's what I've learned. Thank you.
Any questions?
Brian, this summer, we'll be using those CAC kits throughout the city. You are the contact manager, you've been out there signing papers, I'll be down with you, you've done them in the past, and we've worked throughout the city with different departments, cut grass, painting, I've got a lot, I've got a lot of work for them. Also, on the Hilltops, I finally got Hud to go after, sell all of the scattered sites. That's where property, so he'll be selling them, cleaning them, protecting them, putting up for sale for property owners, I thought, Mr. Matt Matus, we're going in full force, clean the place up, drain on Hud's budget, and also the unwanted desirable living of the particular project. So that's going to be my project, summer, so I'll be using you, Mr. Matt Matus, and all you. Chris is Inspector, and the finger's here, that's all. I tried to take a while, maybe a year or two. I thought that's committed, I'm going to have to.
On the two, on the two that you mentioned that you thought were going to be in court, is it because there's just so much rubbish, they can't do it? Is that something maybe we could simply know whose it is, though? If Bob's people picked it up, we could put a lien against their property for the cost of doing it at least some year.
Possibly. I mean, one of them, one has a local landlord. I'm going to actually, after I get finished with the tenant, I'm going to probably have to speak with the landlord, property owner, and see what they can do. Unfortunately, I'm not sure as far as what our city employer are going to want to do. Some of it's pretty rugged terrain and somewhat dangerous, I can't speak for them, it's a possibility, but I just, my first impression looking at it, it's just probably something that the tenant's not going to do with their property.
And then, something I wanted to mention, Franciscan University approached me about, I think it's June 28th, they have a day when they're going to have about 150 volunteers available.
College.
And so they want me to come up with an idea for what they're going to do. I have lots, but I think probably picking up garbage was obviously an easy one. And they'll split up into groups, so maybe we could coordinate, and even with the Hilltop groups and some downtown work, and get them to sweep through a few neighborhoods and help, probably will help those two situations, but I can imagine right where they are, if there's many.
Yeah, there's always a pot can or an empty bottle or something, new every gate wash or something, so there's a lot.
I'll get emails, and we'll coordinate whatever it is they can do to help, because they have a whole day, and that's a lot of people, 150, so.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Billy, I think in another one of our safety meetings, I brought up the idea of the neighbor guidelines, and, you know, people don't always know what they're supposed to do. I think if there's a way that we could republish those, update them, republish them, make sure that it's clear, what are violations, we might be able to preempt some of this stuff, because then people would be more aware, you know, "Oh, I need to go look and see if the paint's still in," or "I need to, need to make sure, you know, it's not March 1st, do I do my lawn mower service, you know, is it ready to go?" And then maybe people could be on the lookout for neighbors that actually need some assistance with that maintenance.
I, what I could do, I'll put that on the agenda for next meeting. And I know Chris has something out, he has to do the process of updating that, and I'll have a question. He'll do this back in the meeting by the end of the week. There is something on the website for that, it's just needs updated, like you said. I read it before, in fact, Mrs. Colonel Geis, who brought it up, my opinion, my personal counsel, and it is out there, it's a good neighbor policy, what people should do, Chris has something out there, and like you said, it's updated, and it's very good.
Maybe, maybe some of us could just go door to door handing it out, instead of having the expense of the postage and...
Well, we really get that support, but we could put some little snippets on there about that, some other things, I mean, we could do that. There's some things we could do, but we'd like Chris updated first, and then we'll go from there. And I'll put that on next SAFER committee meeting agenda. Anything else? I'm going to hit on three things real quick. Mr. Dressel sent an email a couple weeks ago, and this would be on the building grounds, but you are correct, I took pictures. I go and get an email to my office computer, I wanted to bring pictures, and this is the side doors we enter here. The door needs a lot of work, the wood, but like I said, it'd be on the building grounds, but I'll bring it up tonight and see what we can do, I don't know, we need to get a pretty big process.
It's going to depend on the estimate out there.
You don't talk.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I... Yeah, I don't want him to think I didn't forget about it.
This is where the public sees this as the main entrance here.
Right.
That's another thing I'll bring up at the next meeting, is the condition of this place. This is where the employees have to work here. The public, they come here, they see the doors here, it looks nice and everything. You look behind the doors, but again, money is an issue, but there are some quick fixes that we can do here, because right now, a new part of the study for the health department, that's, you're not going to see that go office, and then a decision's going to have to be made, what direction you want to go. So you're going into 17. The meantime, is these employees have to work under these conditions here, we'll try to get it cleaned up, but I will tell you some of this, so. Some of it is paying to get new carpeting, fixing the wall, some of it is just flat cleanliness, and that goes back to the employees, and we'll get that worked out.
Okay. But I know what you think, I forgot about that. I did, I did have it, I've been wanting to talk about it, but today's been a good time to bring it up. Okay. Any questions on the door? Okay. The other thing I wanted to bring up was Officer, or Chief McCaffrey and I were speaking one day, we talked about it, about the $25 release on a towing charge. We talked about that, it would generate... Talk about that, it would generate another $4,000. Remember it was 114 cars, I think, who towed last year for the fact that it, what is it when you tow a car? It's your licenses expire, you have registration.
Driver suspension.
Driver suspension. And then they tow it and then we, they would have to, we would release it and we would get a $25 fee for that. That was something the chief brought up. So that's something we can bring up with the judge on, Judge Massio. Yeah. And the chief had something in writing, he's sick today, so I will bring that up. And then my last thing is, and I handed out something to everybody, it's called, it's called GRATE. G R E A T. And if you remember just, I think, a couple, three Sundays ago, out at the mall with the, and I don't know if this was gang related or not, but what's this, what this is, the GRATE, is gang resistance, education and training. And what it is, is there's a grant and what we could do is have an officer, he would go to the schools and he would train on the, the, the bad effects of being a part of a gang. And, but as I handed this to the city manager, he even had some other suggestions. So, but I'd like to break this up next time. Everybody can look at it, study, see what you think. I think we do need some training. What we have, these kids are 12, 13, 14 years old with guns. I never owned a gun. I'm 60 years, I'll be 60 years old. Never owned a gun and we've got kids with 12 years old that possess a gun. I don't think it's, I think something maybe we should look into. If we can't afford it, that's fine, I understand that. With that, I got one thing. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I talked, I had, I got the ordinance from Republic, but I left it on the kitchen table because I was waiting before I came down. I can't remember the number of it, but it's, it deals with, when the police or the fire department goes on a call, they, they bill.
On accident.
Yeah, on an accident. When it's an accident involved, they, they bill. And I received a couple of calls from insurance agencies to where they didn't think that it was a fairer way of being done. And, and I kind of agree. They pay taxes, people pay taxes for the police or fire to come in here when they, when you're involved in an accident. Record service help cleans up the street too. And we don't make that much money on that. And they bill the insurance company when the insurance company doesn't pay. If the insurance company won't pay, they pass that on to the citizen, but the citizen doesn't, he doesn't have to pay. But there have been some, there have been some citizens that don't know that and they pay. And that also came to my attention. I would like to sunshine an ordinance next week to.
Repeal.
To repeal that ordinance, to do away with it. Because I mean, we're not making that much money on it and I think it's a burden on the citizens. I think it's a burden on the taxpayer all the way around. And for people who come from out of the community, maybe the argument can be, well, they don't pay taxes here, but they're here, they're guests of our city and I just, I just don't think it's so fair. So if there's no objections, I would like to sunshine that next Tuesday to resend that ordinance.
I agree with you. I never did like that ordinance. I believe it brought in $7,000 the past year and that should be covered by the taxes. So you pay 2% tax for police and fire service. You have an accident in our town, that 2% should be sufficient. If it's an out of town person driving through, they're visiting our town, they're spending their dollars. That should be a service. We want to encourage all kind of out of town people to come to our city. So I don't want to, I don't like that. I think we need rid of it and I support you in getting rid of that ordinance.
Any objections to it?
No, I just, I just know the only reason why that was put in because our police department, the fire department do, most of the insurance companies work.
Yeah.
They, they do the investigation and then the insurance company gets it from our police department, fire department. That's the thing and that's why they put this in. This was prior to when I got on council, four years ago. And I had a lot of complaints on it at the beginning. And that's why that was put, that ordinance was put out there. And I agree, our guys do all the work, but a lot of people were calling me saying, I don't want to pay that. I says, you don't have to. Your insurance company's supposed to pay. But I have a problem with that. I have a problem.
Then Mr. Republic, that's for government.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yes, like Mr. Johnson said, it doesn't bring in that much money. It creates more headaches and ill will than it does money. And also, the fire department, under the hazmat regulations, whether we have this ordinance or not, or not, in a hazmat or a spill, we bill the spiller. We have that right to bill them anyway. And actually, out of the money we collected last year, most of it was on two incidents that were the train wreck and like a truck wreck. Those insurance companies pay because under the hazmat regulations, they have to. So most of our money was brought in on those two accidents. The other ones basically said, we're not paying. So you're, you're right. It, it doesn't bring in that much money and we're still going to bill the, the companies that spilled.
I agree with that.
So. So, so I, I agree with that.
I'll give it to you, bro. Thank you.
Anything else from anybody? Yes, sir, Bear?
We did, or?
Oh, no. Okay, I will, I want to make sure, I want to make sure you want to say something. I make a motion, thank you, everybody. Thanks, everybody, for your participation tonight. Thank you. I make a motion, we adjourn tonight's health and safety.